Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Michael Rossi. This is our Aqua for Protection Agency meeting. That we have quarterly. Will the Turk please call the roll?
Michael Florio.
He's on his way.
Ellen Dolgren.
Yeah.
Dylan Walter.
Here.
Jay Mandell. Zach Lord. Eddie Alvarino.
Present.
Cinzia Latieri. Beau Clark.
Here.
Robert Corson.
Here.
Brian Pellegrini.
Here.
Susan Marcus will not be able to attend this evening. Michael Rossi.
Here.
Okay, good. I would like to see Bob for Zach and I'll see Brian for Cinzia. We have a four. First item on there is the approval of the minutes from our last quarterly meeting in July.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting motion carried. Good. We don't have any old business. This one, we actually have new business though, so it's an unusual surprise for us. The first item is the Aqua for Protection Agency meetings eights that were distributed.
Yes.
For next year. January, again, going to quarterly. Most of the time, it's going to be at six forty-five. Before the PMZ meeting, except for January where we're going to have it. At, am I correct? Where we'll be meeting at six thirty instead because we have an agenda for next, for the next meeting.
Sure.
Okay?
Okay.
So otherwise, it's the same quarterly schedule going on. Of course, October, we're meeting on the fifth for the same reason we are today. Is there any comments, questions? And I have a motion to approve the panel.
So what?
Yeah, second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing. Motion carries. Thank you. The next one, we wanted to talk about some training for APA, which is probably necessary because we usually don't have much business, so we probably don't even know what we're doing on APA. So can you tell us what we're gonna?
Yep. So what we're gonna do, so I bet meeting where we come in six thirty in January, we're gonna go over the statute in general. We'll go over sort of where our Aqua for Protection areas are, the things that this commission is required, the agency is required to take a look at what would happen, for example, if we got an application, maybe the clean meetings or that kind of stuff, and special meetings and those kinds of things. But make sure everybody understands their responsibilities. We'll go through some of the items out of the state training, so I'll pull some of the data out of there and share it with you. And then we'll go through our list of properties, so you have an idea of kind of, every year, we're required to do a certified list. We do that administratively in-house, but we will make sure you know kind of what the scope of our areas, the properties that we're watching are. In the meantime, if anybody has any questions, anything you want answered at that training, anything at all, if you email me directly, I will make sure that we have the answer built into the presentation, so it all gets answered there. The other thing we'll do is have, there's an eight-hour training that you can also take through the states, and I'm sure some of you have already done it. But if you have not, that's another really good thing to do, and that goes into far more depth than we'll have time for in our half-hour meeting, so we'll send out the link for that as well. It does not count towards your mandated state training for the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I would say if right now you're in between, like, I don't have enough time and I need to get some training done, do your training for PMZ first, because that's a statutory source of seats, and we'll follow up with the Aqua for stuff immediately after, just because we're getting ready here.
I'd like to, we have Zach arrived. So Bob, you're now replacing Gary.
And Mike Florio here as well.
I, I have to end this. Okay. I have one other thing I think should be part of new business that goes with that, is I think we should be, we should review the bylaws for the APA. If we can find it. Okay? If we can't, we need to make sure that we create that. That'll probably be a good thing there.
I would say, yes.
Okay? With that, is there any other new business people would like to bring forward? Okay. Then we're adjourned. Make a motion to him. Okay?
Second.
Second, would you? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Meeting, motion carries. Thank you.
Let me put my statement.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Michael Rossi, chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, that we like to call our regular monthly meeting, the order, will work, we just call the rules.
Michael Florio.
Yeah.
Ellen Dolgren.
Yeah.
Dylan Walter.
Here.
Jay Mandell.
Here.
Zach Lord.
Here.
Eddie Alvarino.
Here.
Cinzia Latieri.
Here.
Beau Clark.
Here.
Robert Corson.
Here.
Brian Pellegrini.
Yes.
Susan Marcus is not here this evening. Michael Rossi.
Here.
Okay, all the regular members are here, so there's no seating of alternates. The first thing is, we had a application coming in late, so I'd like to have a motion to add it to the agenda as new business item V. This is Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-five dash twenty, special exception to relocate the box search pursuant to section twenty-seven point two point fifty C of the Clinton zoning regulations at One Heritage Park Road. Maps seventy-seven block fifty-nine, lot H dash nine A, zone I two. The applicant is William Walter Bennett. And we'll need to just receive this and schedule it for a public hearing at our November tenth meeting.
I'd like to make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Yeah. I'm going to remember the rest of the section as well.
Yeah.
Motion is consecutive.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing. Motion carries. For my comments. I'd like to wish everybody luck in the election. There is nobody, we're all running on the post.
Just go vote for yourself. He's not being out.
Okay. Next, minutes. Review and approval of September eighth, twenty twenty-five minutes, meeting minutes. Any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in the last, in section seven or business, the vote on that state regulation, when we conducted the vote, since it's something that can't be shot down, we just kind of assumed it was, it was all in favor. I kind of wanted to, I wanted to vote no on that and have reflected, but it wasn't even an opportunity at the meeting, so they could have a record change to reflect a no vote. That, even though it's just strictly symbolic, it doesn't affect any outcomes or anything.
So I talked to the town attorney briefly just to see what the procedural piece, she said, you know, the vote was what it was, we can't change the record as it occurred, however, your objection to it can be noted, and we can put a note in the record to say that while the vote was taken in this manner, at the subsequent meeting, you know, this is what you said, this would be reflected in this, this meeting, and we can put a note in the previous one, so we'll let there's.
Cool. Okay. Thank you.
So we don't change the meeting, the minutes as presented, they'd be on the next meeting.
Correct, because there was not a call for a no vote at the time, and so therefore.
So I'd like to make motion to approve the meeting for minutes as presented. I'll say.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Standing. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our plan of conservation and development. And where it's going to be a presentation first. And who's going to presentation? Ah, there you are. I'm sure you've seen you on Zoom. Yeah.
You're in person this evening. All right, so see if we can. So I have just a few slides.
State your name, please, for the record.
Yes, Victoria Beatry with Resilient Land and Water. All right. So just a few slides to go over a quick summary of the current draft plan of conservation and development before, before you all tonight to go forward for the next phase after endorsement. So, very quick agenda, gonna go over a very high-level summary of all of the engagement. I'm just gonna give you a quick highlight review of the POC document. POCD document, we're gonna go over the quick current status of the plan, and then what the next steps are for the commission, and then going forward after this evening. So engagement summary really did drive a lot of the plan, which I believe it was last month I was here, and we went over a little bit in depth, more in depth. But we had over four hundred and thirty participants on the survey, which may not sound like a lot, but given a lot of other planning efforts I've conducted, that's actually a really great response. And there was a lot of thoughtful feedback. So just to kind of summarize it, what did folks think made Clinton to be a great place to live? Strong sense of community, the location and the natural beauty, really big on small-town charm, overall affordability, especially in comparison to other shoreline communities. There's a lot of community events and activity that went on in town, and then they really liked the education and public services. If they wanted to see something happen in the next ten years, what was that? To sum it up, they really wanted to see downtown revitalization and aesthetic improvements, especially in the downtown and the Route One corridor. Business development and economic growth, a lot of discussion on small businesses, youth recreation and community spaces, there was a lot of interest in those, as well as even more community events. Infrastructure and public services, really maintaining those services. It wasn't too much about what was needed, but really maintaining and improving where we could. Housing needs, which is, of course, in every community, environmental and historic preservation, and then community identity and events. A lot of this, what made the town great by way of the survey participants, and then what they wanted to see, really was integrated throughout the plan, which I'll show you in a second when we talk about the structure. We had a couple workshops. I pulled just a couple bullet points. There was a lot of, a lot of feedback that was taken, especially from the boards. But the folks that participated in the workshops had a lot of dynamic thinking, right? They were really trying to connect the dots, especially, you know, what the plan of conservation and development is. So example, for example, the cultural arts are important who we are, it's our economic dominator, and we should enhance and encourage its growth. So folks really understand, you know, what's driving the economy locally, what we need to enhance, where we need to improve, and what they want to see over the next ten years, right? So, so folks in the community are really thinking about where the town needed to go, so we really tried to take a lot of that feedback. And I'll highlight kind of how we tried to reflect that in just a second with some quotes. So the plan itself, the document itself, is breaking, broken down into four main segments, like I presented last month. We've got the introduction, really just the background. What's the POCD? What was the planning process? What did we do to get to this point and to get to the final draft? And then the Clinton today provides that background. What happened over the past ten years? You know, what's changed? What are some of the achievements that have been made in the town? The next section is the future, the vision, right? So we've got Clinton's town vision, as well as the goals for the next ten years. So you can see on the left, we've got that vision, which kind of ties in the last POCD, but also springs the town forward and where we're going to go. And then we've also got the goal sections, which you can see the green and the pink here for the waterfront and the open space. So the goals are color-coordinated and they tie into the implementation matrix. So we have two other goals here, which are housing and the downtown, the blue and the orange. This implementation matrix, matrix ties all of the actions from the goals, and kind of puts them in an easy-to-read format, and also identifies some partnerships. So not necessarily the responsible entity, but who needs to be at the table when we're having these discussions. These partnerships include municipal departments, municipal boards, commissions, as well as local, regional, and state partners. So that implementation matrix is a really good starting point, like I said, to get folks to the table, kind of a living document, so it can be updated as partnerships are identified going forward over the next ten years. So the current status of your plan, so the POCD has been reviewed several times. Periods and commas and hyphens have been changed numerous times, which I wholeheartedly appreciate. So it has been reviewed several times by the committee, the consultant team, the town planner, it's really circulated quite a few times. The plan was recently made for a preliminary public review. I call it preliminary because it will be released again for the formal public comment period during the lock period. The plan is still considered a draft. We will be accepting comments and whatnot from the community, as well as state and local entities, which will receive, you know, a formal letter. And now essentially the POCD is waiting to be recommended for review. So it's basically before you all this evening to consider for endorsement. So what does that mean? That means going forward after this evening, if the plan is endorsed, it will essentially be locked, right? So we will not be making any more edits on the plan over the course of this lock period. It will be made available to DEEP, it'll be made available to RiverCob, as well as Town Council on a formal level, as well as another public release, so that the community and anyone else in town and outside of town can review and also provide their comment. December eleventh, we have as the projected kind of review of all comments, assuming we'll hear back from DEEP, RiverCob, Town Council. We'll take a look at those comments, and they'll kind of come back to the planning team to be considered for, you know, how they'll be addressed, how they'll be integrated, if, you know, if they need to be. And then, as of right now, we have a potential tentative adoption date of December fifteenth with a public hearing. The PCC, you can either choose to adopt that evening with a public hearing, or keep figuring open and adopt later. So of course, this is kind of a tentative schedule. It is, depending on, you know, if we receive the comments back from the Town Council and RiverCob in time. But as of right now, this is the timeline we're shooting for. So it was a very quick summary, but I didn't want to waste too much time. I know we've been before you guys before, but happy to answer any questions if they you have any.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody have questions at this point? I mean, we've all been looking at this document.
For that, before I prepare to make a motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have one question. Victoria, is that, this is something that came up from the guy at E C who drew the old Clinton logo with the anchor. Are you using that one or the one that you created? Because I can't tell the difference at this point, but he did, and was just letting go. I thought there.
We, I think we agreed on the, it was like a combination. So the same color, it was a slightly different format, just because of the way we wanted to get the, our town, our town, our future. So I remember it was kind of a, a wonky, there was like a cool wave in the one that he created, and so it made that, I shouldn't say that one was wonky, the our town and our future was going to be a little
Gotcha.
askew. So it's a mesh of the two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thanks.
Yeah.
Usually working for Royalty.
And this was the same, I know.
Okay, that was answered. Again, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move to endorse the draft two thousand twenty-five Plan of Conservation Development to make necessary referrals to the Clinton Town Council, the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and the lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Chapter one twenty-six dash eight twenty-three.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Standing. Motion carries. Thank you. With that, we go to the public hearings. Will the secretary please read the notice of public hearing?
Yes, the Town Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Monday, October sixth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M. to consider the following. PCC dash twenty-five dash eighteen, text amendment, addition to section thirty-three parking of the Clinton zoning regulations, electric vehicle charging station requirements. Applicant Ron Lyman, Lyman Real Estate. PCC twenty dash twenty-five dash sixteen, text amendment, addition to section three, section twelve, amend section twenty-seven, and modify section twenty-nine of the Clinton Planning and Zoning Regulations to allow residential adaptive reuse to existing structures for the purpose of multiple dwelling units in the B two, B three, and B four zones. Applicant Matthew Williams, Williams Architects. At such, at said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. The applicants and correspondence are available, the applications and correspondence are available for public inspection on the town's website. Anyone requiring special pop of aid, you participate in the public hearing should contact the land use office at eight six zero six five nine six one three three. Michael Rossi, chairman, Town of Clinton and Planning and Zoning.
Thank you very much. We don't have anyone currently on Zoom, so there's no public on Zoom. I want to stake that for the record. This is, it is, of course, still being recorded. The first one on our agenda is Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-five dash sixteen, which is a text amendment to section three, addition to section twelve, and removing section twenty-seven, and modifying section twenty-nine for the residential adaptive reuse question. Is there an agent or?
Mr. Chairman and members of the mission, Matt Williams, Williams Architects, eight ninety-seven Boston Post for Elsa Living, Quentin, Ireland, whoever. I wanted to just review and make some additional points to this, to this regulation proposal, and there is some new information available on that, but first of all, I think the, there are three major objectives to this, and one is to preserve the architectural character, vitality to town center. We've lost an awful lot of old buildings over the years, and there certainly will be more to, you know, to follow, with or without this regulation, unfortunately. The other thing is to provide much-needed housing opportunities. And the third thing is really to encourage rehabilitation, better utilization, utilization at all of older buildings that were originally purchased for residential use, but unfortunately are, are, you know, strangled by a commercial regulation. Many of those buildings are not viable to be their own car-arched, particularly the second story. One of the things that gives our new one villages all the character is that two-story residential facade, and I heard mentioned last time about, you know, the desire for mixed use. You know, we've designed buildings like that. We designed sixty-seven West Main Street for Michael about ten years ago. And that is an up-down commercial residential use. But many of the old existing buildings just aren't suitable for that. You've got small rooms, small spaces, small footprints, small lots, parking is difficult. All those challenges are, you know, and you can see many buildings in town that, or it's already obvious that they suffer from that. You know, what you see in a lot of small village towns like Clinton, and I've worked at many of them, is see maybe a business on the first floor, and then the second story, you can see furniture in the windows, because it's just used for and it's not. You don't really allow any residential of any kind here to be three and four districts at this particular time. And this would introduce that possibility, if only with existing buildings that are structurally capable, even converted to multiple family. Multi-family, I think in probably eighty percent of the cases, many of the cases, means it becoming probably two, maybe three units. I mean, most of these buildings are small. Proposed regulation doesn't allow you to expand that footprint, except for accessibility and life safety reasons. And accessibility is another, another issue. For instance, at fourteen West Main, which was the subject property that I was asked to look at the spread change for, the first floor of that building, if there's more than one unit, or there's more than two units in the building, those have got to be accessible units. They've got to have that accessibility act grade. Therefore, in some instances, perhaps not in that instance, but many instances, to add a ramp, or some buildings may want to add an elevator, those are about the only reasons you can expand the footprint of the building. And I think the other thing is that these old buildings are not, not easily converted, and I think the ones that can accept another unit, and believe me, there are more examples than the B two, three, and four districts, probably if you have commercial uses than the old buildings. Most of them, many of them are multi-family or two-family. Those are not, you know, they're not easily adaptable. At a certain point, a landlord looks at it and says, I can't, I can't afford this, or it doesn't make any sense to keep this building. And then we end up with whatever that might be, you know. And looking up and down the street, you know, last couple of days, I'm preparing for this discussion one last time, hopefully. You know, one of the things I discovered was the Station One building, just a little one-story building, right opposite the end of Grove Street, if you're familiar with it. It was built nineteen eighty-one. It's a one-story building. It looks like a little range building. The building just to the, to the east of it, which I think is fifty-five, is a very cute old building. It's a little gray building when you look front, and I'm not sure what's in there. If you go online, it's actually listed as a residential use, but I know it's also a commercial. I did go through many of the properties, and I brought it forward just to give you a little visual graphic of what this would be. I think this is a low impact in terms of, I know there was, there's concern, and should be concerned about you know, diluting or losing commercial viability. Or commercial uses. I don't think that that's really a risk. So these, these little black squares are buildings that are probably media age, probably were residential originally, there are not a lot of them. And I'll just run through some of them quickly with you. This is a beautiful two-story house, probably built around, probably only reliable built around nineteen hundred. You can't see it anymore because it's all trees, but I remember it was on the market for about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars about twenty-five years ago. And it's a single-family home, and it's, if you can see it, it's a really nice building. That type of building, I don't think, is at risk for, you know, or really a needed or wanted, you know, commercial use. There's another little ranch house, really don't see very well there. I mentioned last time, the pie trailer, that great old, Fredo slash week revival that's there is an even building that I think would be shaming loops, and I think it's a building that's easily converted to at least one other unit. Even though I know they've had, and I've been in there, they've got some kind of a, you know, of a, you know, assignment type of a setup in there, or D and T kind of thing. It's only listed as a residential use. This is this old Victorian, which was also renovated probably twenty-five or thirty years ago, which is a nice building, which does have a multi-family in that. There's one property on Maple Avenue that's actually a daycare, and I don't know, it's a little house, it's a daycare, because it happens to sit in the B four. But it may, you know, if somebody ever wanted to do something with that, they could, but it probably isn't practical, what they have. You know, there's a couple other little buildings here. Some of these, I'm not even sure if they were residential originally, and one is Rich Holden's place, and Enterprise Computer, I'm pretty sure he's still in there. And across the street, there's a great old Queen Anne era house that was just renovated, probably only because you do a lot of residential. It's too, I think it's too family now, when you look at the field card. There's a bunch of others here as you go along, and particularly toward the east end of West Main here, and that are, that are multi-family, if you don't know it, there's an old you know, Georgian-era cake, but I know it from, I remember the building, it's thirty years ago. It's got about eight meters on the outside of it. There's a lot of units in there. We don't know what they are, but I mean, a lot of this has happened naturally, just because obviously some of their beginning zoning, or it was just sort of done, and nobody seemed to care at the time. But it's because those, those are the practical uses, utilizations for some of these, for some of these buildings. So I think that, you know, trying to make better use of the, of the old architectural treasures that we have in this town is really one of the, one of the real benefits of this. And I think that, you know, the regulations in many, many towns, I think, I think of downtown Bradford, and the plant Bradford has got four beautiful buildings on South Main Street. And they're actually all multi-family, and you wouldn't know it. Because they're just well-kept, you know, when people live in those places, there's better pride, there's, there's better everything. And particularly, if you think about B three and four, you know, if I wanted to buy a building, and it's, there's own commercial, right? So this is B two over here, right? But if I wanted to live in one of those buildings, there wouldn't be a lot of living in that. There are apartments, there's apartments, I believe, above you know, the store that's on the corner, twenty-seventh East Main, which is, which is the same building the coffee break is in. You just look up there, you can see people, there are apartments, throw away these places, but they're not legal uses under the current regulation. Again, the point is that I think that there's a natural functional Again, the point is that I think that there's a natural functional, you know, habitat that, that is created from our community. And it's based on what the physical characteristics are of any property and structure. And I think what this regulation does, and I'm just going to go through that again, what its major principles are. The only properties that are really eligible is that applicant has to prove to you that it was originally purposed for residential use. And I don't think that that's too difficult to do in some instances, than others, you know. I think it would be almost impossible. But again, these black dots represent the buildings that I've identified as being over fifty years old. That might have possibility of, of another, if, some of them are single family residential already, some of them are already two units, some of them are more units than, as I mentioned. But that's the fundamental criteria, and they've got to be structurally capable of handling that. You can't tear the building down and say it was residential use and then here it is. Because that does not, that is not consistent with really the, trying to maintain our historic. Better the tip of the downtown. The other thing that's really, really important in this regulation is the fact that you're given the discretion to make a judgment about. Whether or not the potential loss of a commercial space or use is. You know, whether that type of a proposal pervert preserves active street level uses, that's an important thing. It's a regulation that we've had in Madison for a number of years, and I've seen it exercised on multiple occasions on Wall Street and other places. Where if somebody wants to take a, a building and say, I want two apartments in there, and I don't want the first order commercial. You have discretion to say, you don't think that that's appropriate. There's a flood regulation in here, and there's also that, that Abby had added in, just having to coordinate the rest of the regulation. Every talk of footprint. In her conversations with the town attorney, since we last met, they asked us to strike twelve point six four point three B. Which was trying to just make it more viable for people if they had setback issues or coverage issues with their property. If they wanted to take their original, you know, residential property and turn it into two units or whatever it might be, the setbacks would become an issue. That's been taken out because they, I think they saw that there was some legal potential implications with that, and it didn't surprise me at all when I wrote it. I, I was. Kind of thinking it wouldn't see the light of day, that particular piece of. Anyway, part meter is happy screen. Et cetera, et cetera. So now Abby wrote a little summary, and I don't think we just had a chance to look it over again, it just came out Friday. That she has communicated extensively with the town attorney as to the question of. The violating the uniformity requirements of Connecticut general statute eight dash two A two. And their opinion concludes that the proposed testament does not violate uniformity provisions. Doesn't put you at risk of somebody accusing you of spot zoning in this situation. And then she also goes on to mention that twelve six four three B is to be taken out. Says language concerning law standards and informally may result unintended, unintended consequence should properties with special exceptions. Be redeveloped in the future. And then she also, I think very aptly states how this is consistent with the town plan and development. And there's a number of things that are in your current P O C D. Relative to, you know. It notes that in its introduction, the clean's viability relies on its ability to adapt and encourage a vibrant and diverse population while preserving its character. I spoke more about that before, and I think that a lot of small towns are worried about their small businesses mostly because they don't have a, a population physically to live locally. And I think that that's, that's pretty uniform in all, all our small towns, so. She says, this point is reiterated in the future use sections of subsection of P O C's housing chapter. We're targeting certain areas in town for multi, multi-family housing, including downtown and the west end. Well, this gives you, I think, a way of doing some limited multi-family. But within existing structures, and again, to promote, you know, the stability of our architectural heritage. So those are my, those are my points. I don't know if anybody has any questions. I would really be disappearing from all our commission members about.
Mister Matthews, how many homes are eligible? Or how many buildings are eligible?
I have a list here.
Is this an exact count?
No.
Okay, so we don't know.
So I have a list here of the ones that I've identified on this map, and it's pretty. Pretty much skip much. Hey, everybody knows these buildings, if you stop thinking about it, three of them, you wouldn't know. I did bring photographs in case anybody's interested, so. In, in the B four on West Main, there are four of them. B two, we already allow one and two family. There's a multitude of already multi-family in that zone. And again, these wouldn't, you know, you don't open yourself up to big multi-family developments, so this is the matter of adding a couple more units here and there. I think with some of the older buildings that aren't already. But I can tell you right now, if I run through these numbers in the B two. Twenty six is a mixed use, twenty eight's multi-family, thirty four is multi-family, thirty six is multi-family. Their thirty eight is just a single family residence. It's one of the very few. Forty two is the Matt Kate apartments. Fifty three is mixed use, as I mentioned, that the cute little gray building there opposite Grove. Station one is commercial. I don't see that anybody rushing, and it's not even old enough yet, but I don't see anybody rushing to make that residential personally. Sixty one, which is the one connected to the package store, the old bottle shop, I'm not sure what it's called now. That looks like an old house to me originally. Somebody could perhaps want to put a unit or two in there, I don't know.
It needs a lot of work.
It does, and it would be nice to see it get some work. But again, that's me, Eddie, that's evidence of part of the problem is that people don't have the right to do it. And, and have it be, you know, profitable in any way, or at least five, maintain it properly. Seventy four is a single family residence. Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm just kind of running through them, so. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. But of those fifteen, probably ten of them are already residential or multi-family. That's in, that's in the B two.
But there's fifteen that are fifty years old within these zones.
Yep.
Or in the B two.
Yeah.
The B two, yeah.
Within B two, B three and B four?
Yep.
No, no, but I'm asking.
No, no, I haven't, I haven't, so they're, they're kind of there. So in here, there's fifteen black dots, okay? Of those, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. And, and are either multi-family or mixed use of those fifteen already. There's a couple of further, two little, two little houses on Maple, there's two, I mentioned one of them and I grow. Very few, first properties on Grove, which I don't see those anywhere. I think Congress is an area where, which is a special area. You've got really nice, beautiful homes up here with views of the river. I don't see any of those rushing to go multi-family. I also think that, that that's what your, that's what your purpose is for. I actually think if you were to make a zone change to your map, I think I would probably pull those into the, the dark ten to remain. I think one of the reasons this B two reaches all the way back here is because of the remaining function down there. And then there's two commercial buildings down here, which I think were built. And then there's just a few here that, you know, again, are all in pretty. You know, not, not perhaps a shame.
But again, do we have a count?
Oh, oh, yeah, well, I don't know, there's six. I've got, there's two buildings here that maybe you can add an apartment to, and I think there's already apartments in them. I didn't, you know, I didn't go through anything exhausting. There were four in the B four, about fifteen in the B two and fifteen. Fifteen in the B two, but there are ten of them at least are already have residences, they.
Do we know how many will be coming online within the next ten years?
I know, I have no idea. No.
That's all right. You know, you mentioned several times, especially in the beginning, that you want to preserve the architectural character of these homes. But your regulation really only protects the foundation, it only protects the, the footprint. It doesn't protect the exterior of the home. It's not written that way.
That's what I've read too.
Well, I think.
Keep in mind, you may not want to take full advantage of that.
No, I understand.
No, no, I know. Others will.
Others will, no. It says right here, the building proposed for reuse must be capable of being redeveloped for residential use. I mean, I could have taken that further and said structurally capable. If that, if that, you know, but I mean, I really, I can just tell you that. The, the market forces of building anything nowadays new or tearing it down to the foundation, tearing it out of the foundation. It just doesn't make, it just doesn't make any economic sense. Now, I know that, that's not a hard and fast that will prevent.
Right, and that's.
I understand that, but I think it gives, it gives flexibility to see some good things happen.
One of, one of the things that I just wanted to mention is that a lot of the properties that you mentioned also having to be in a flood zone. Especially the ones at the far end of West Main Street, Coffee Break area and the opposite side of the road. As we all know, we can't do over fifty percent of the assessed value of the structure. We're not allowed to challenge that now. There's really a lot of limitation in terms of what people could do. Those value, I was just looking at the valuations for Coffee Break. They can do a hundred and seventy grand worth of work, which I don't think is enough to get that thing up and running. The place next to where they could do seventy five thousand dollars worth of work over a five year period, I mean. It, it's, I, I don't know, it's just really difficult to be able to do the things you want with the confines of the theme of flood zone.
Well, yeah, I'm really familiar with the, with the flood regulation very, and also I think generally about what it is to town. I can tell you, these two properties, if I don't believe they're in the flood zone, if they are, they would move by a home if they hired an engineer.
Is the blue part the, the Amnest River there?
No, this is the water, your waterfront district, I think. This is a zoning overlay, so. When you have that, I think you might have, I think you have.
I think, I think he means a light blue.
Yeah, no, no, that's the river. I think this right here.
Okay, those, the intersection of the river and, and Route one. Through to Gator Creek, all the flood zone is touching the properties except for that one that it already is.
Right, yeah, but we all know all these are, are, are flood properties here, and then when you get in here, it's lower. This sits way up high, I think sits up on the bigger one.
Yeah, that's, but that's already a multi.
It's a good point, Dylan, and I think, you know, one of the things I'll tell you about, I'm not sure about twenty seven West Main, you mentioned Coffee Break, I'm not sure where the flood line is off, off the river there.
It's up closer to our Rammer God's office there.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, then this is really low. I've never had, I've never had cause to look at it, so I don't know that I answer that.
I think, so even if we did allow it, it's kind of a.
I think that there's, there's some instances of that, I'm sure, you know, over here, you've got, this is all very, I have a good situation. So you've got, so the areas here, you bait that, be more to prevent somebody from renovating. Up to fifty percent, but renovating up to fifty percent, if it's a matter of taking your second story, as long as somebody lives there is not necessarily that big of a deal. They want to not deal with FEMA, I'd be happy to. I'm just saying.
So I'm just curious as to why the applicant did not do an eight thirty G. Because that would not only allowed for the affordable housing aspect, that would guarantee affordable housing in Clinton, which. A lot of people who spoke last time, you know, wanted this because they wanted more affordable housing. So to me, this, an eight thirty G, instead of changing the regulations for all of it. You could get an eight thirty G just for this particular building and. Get your needs served, but then we were also under state mandate to have a certain amount of affordable housing, which we're nowhere near. And, and I don't know, so to me, that just, you know, folks were coming in and I really heard that, you know, we really hear when people say we need affordable housing. Well, this, an eight thirty G would give us affordable housing, give you the multi-family unit. And then it doesn't force us to change the regulations for all of these zones. So I guess I was just curious why there wasn't an eight thirty G put forward.
An eight thirty dream runs roughshod over your regulation. The developers will do that. And I, I think that when you, if you're going to come in, if you're in an eight thirty G and your limit, your income is limited, you develop. You've got to make it as large as you possibly can, and I work for a lot of developers and I have these discussions with them all the time. And I've done E thirty G right at the center of town, did one at twenty six West Main, we did a thirty four West Main. Those haven't been built. Reasons not related, relative to anything, but, but those were projects, they're very small, very expensive to do. In terms of getting them approved and dealing with the, the rigors, I guess, of reporting and other things. So I'm not a developer, I don't know, I'm just telling you, my clients have shared with me. I think an eight thirty G is, you know. I think that the other thing that I think you want to keep in mind is these smaller, older buildings are going to limit their rent. There's somewhat self-limiting in rent anyway, just because they're older. You know, you build a great big new building, you can get top dollar for it, you know. But if you, but if, if you're going to continue to utilize older buildings, there's somewhat self-limiting in rent, I'll tell you that. I know it's not. Perhaps as limiting as the eight thirty G prospects. You know, the eight thirty G also has other challenges in that, you know, the thirty percent or thirty, thirty, right? Thirty percent that you're required to have requires that you get a certain number of units. I've seen people walk away from, from potential properties like, well, if I can't get, like, I've got to have six, five. My thirty percent now, now, now three, like, you know, I've got forty percent of my units are, are rent limited. There was, there was a property in Madison a couple of years ago where they had six little individual houses. And planning is only, their project was said you only had five, they didn't do it.
Okay.
This doesn't make any financial sense, that's all I'm saying.
I was just confused because I think last time, one of the points that people were making about changing these regulations was to have more affordable housing.
I can make a suggestion. I think you can allow affordable housing in, in these areas so that those, you could utilize that. Or add an affordable component to any regulation that you're right, just, you know.
But that's not what's for us.
Are any of these going to be listed as affordable under what the state regulation of affordability is? Are you going to be listing any of these apartments?
No, that really doesn't matter to some.
No, yeah.
We can't take that into consideration, right?
Well, that's true. I, I, Matt, I just want to say this. If, before we change regulations. Both were a good point. People, people could, you could buy the house. And all this regulation, as I read it, they, all they're going to do is keep the footprint, correct? So listen, so. So then you could go in, it's turn the whole house down, leave the footprint and build what they want. So to me, if you, if, the only way I would vote for this is a case by case. Basis, because you can't change all the regulations because people will come in, suck up these houses. Tear them down and then, and they're going to use the footprint, that, because you got to stay within, stay within the footprint.
I think, I, I.
Am I, am I right, though? Is it?
I think that that's, I think it depends on how you decide to enforce twelve six four three. And I think what I would suggest, prevent that, if I can. Is to just change it, kick, must be structurally capable of being redeveloped. In other words. You've got to leave this.
But say it's not in a flood zone, not anywhere, but I'm, 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 the way I read it is, they can come in. You could suck up the property, you know, and people move out, you could do what you want with it. Because it's in that footprint. That's what you want us to change, and I, I'm not for that.
Basically, I like the idea of preserving the old houses and the old structures. I, I like the idea that we need more residential, that kind of thing, you know, I just don't have an issue with. But I do scratch my head over the approach to the regulations. And the specific, I, I was a little surprised that the town attorney didn't come back as positively as he did. But it seems very different from the way I understand the way a special exception works. I had always understood that a special exception could be used within a particular zone for a use that. It could be stricter than the underlying zone. I mean, if you had a business. So, for example, and you might say that if somebody wants to. You open a business that you would expect would generate a lot of noise, for example. It might require a special exception because you would require the applicant to demonstrate that he had taken. Measures to abate the noise, or maybe larger setbacks for this noisy business or something like that. I had always understood that it was for things that were to be, you know, stricter. For things that were to be, you know, stricter. This is a way, you're looking here, it seems to me, to make a special exception. To be a little bit more lenient for for a particular use. And it's, it's, and and I I recognize based on everything that the attorney said. That there are other towns that have done this and other regs. But it does seem to be at odds with the way special exceptions are. Designed to function.
Respond to that, I think it's completely dependent on every individual property. I I think that, that I think that, um, you know, if I look at fourteen West Main Street. You know, it's only the uses that's a question, it's that, you know, there's all kinds of space on that property. If you have a very small property and you've got a building that's in setbacks and everything else. Uh, I think that then we, you know. There's maybe some small benefit, but I I just don't really, I don't really follow what you're trying to say, I think.
Well, what I'm trying to say is that it seems to be at odds with the way state statutes and the like define especially.
I just wanna remind you one thing, this is a new use. It's a, it's a new use that's permitted by special exception only. So it's not any more lenient in any other way. Than other than, you know, it's got criteria, specific criteria for it. Uh, I think unlike multiple uh dwelling units, you have in your regular, they had these special exception criteria, as I recall. So it has, it has all those normal, you know, restrictions.
Okay, well.
I disagree, I and I agree with what Alan said and her approach to it. But getting back to the standards and also I'd like to take this opportunity to say that I completely disagree with the attorney's opinion here. When you read her opinion. She opines that we have to consider more than eight, eight dash two. That's kind of backwards, eight dash two should be the anchor, and then there are special considerations afterward. But her justification is not that it was legal, so to speak, it's more that it was defendable. And we're not here to do what's defendable, we're here to do what's right. And clearly, making special exceptions for special buildings. I mean, look at the litmus test, if you have this building that's exactly the same as that building, on the same size lot. Everything else is equal, except for the age. Does that ring uniform to anybody?
No, that's doesn't.
I mean, it just simply isn't, and and getting back to the architectural.
I think you could take that off. And I think you could just say that was originally purposed for residential use, and you will automatically be listing at that point older buildings because.
Okay, that's my next point, if I, if I could, does anybody in this room consider a building built in nineteen seventy five? To be of a significant architectural, cultural value to this town? I mean, there's not even a significant ar- uh architectural phase then, I mean, you'd have to go back. You know, a hundred years to to mid-century modern designs, you know, from like the thirties or the fifties.
You can pick whatever date you want, and it's actually a date that.
But but the date is, we can't pick whatever date we want because we have a date in front of us.
Well, I understand that, but but this is about hopefully trying to craft a regulation that will help the town, right? It's not just my client, it's not just all the other people who are sitting on older buildings that they don't have impractical use for. Because nobody wants fish, cuz they, cuz nobody wants them commercially or whatever their specific challenge may be. It's about trying to make those things happen, so. The, as far as the age of the building goes, I mean, you've got a lot of arbitrary things in your regulation, you've got a posted ninety day notice for buildings that are more than however many years old, like in reward.
Nineteen forty five.
Nineteen forty five, so you have a specific year.
But that's, that's townwide, that that again goes to you know, uniformity or lack thereof in this regulation, I think that, I think there are some points. In this proposal. But I think the regulation as proposed to us is. Poorly crafted, quite frankly, to, and cuz it doesn't address the specific needs that we need, and I agree with Chintia, I mean, quite frankly. If you look at our, there are some points in our, in our current P O C D that you can find some. Uniformity with, there's some consistency with, but I've got a list of several uh. Points in the, in the current P O C D that it's strictly inconsistent with, and more importantly. It's more specifically inconsistent with these, you can have a broad thing that says we want to expand housing opportunities. But when you have specific things that say in these zones, we want to have mixed use. That overrides the broad concern. And probably more importantly than that is, we just endorsed a plan of conservation and development where we. Really pushed to have mixed use in these areas, and the only area that we even considered. Consideration, cuz we did uh for the Indian River Shops in that area up there, we we looked at that and said, if this doesn't develop. We might wanna take a second look at this area, so we thought about this. And, you know, I for one, I'm not ready to scrap nine months' work before we even adopt it.
Nine months we worked on.
I mean, I just.
It was my intention that you could actually have an excuse within the utilization of this.
Well, you could, because it's allowed.
From paying any building and, you know, putting your uh, putting your business on the first floor and you can't live above it, though. So in reality, when you, when you make illegal any residential use, you deny everybody that option. Um, in the R, in the B four and the B three. You don't have that option because you can't live up there.
I. I'm sort of in. Going to come up really stranger, I uh, I really agree with your intent. Yeah, I absolutely agree with the intent.
Thank you.
And I disagree with Bo's concern about it, uh, with, you know, his objection to what the uh lawyers had. But I don't think the wording as presented to us achieves what we want. Um. It, I think it. I look at it as something that. Does point out a need for us to figure out how to properly do this. Properly uh evaluate reuse, but. I I don't, I'm not, you're not convincing me that this language does that.
Mister Chairman, I I would agree with Michael's statement.
I I agree with you on everything you said. But that's, you know, it isn't, it isn't your idea that I I'm objecting to, it is the. When I read the the regulation and think about it now with the applied, I'm concerned that we. It needs to be revised. And I don't wanna adopt it already knowing that I would wanna revise it. That, that would be my emphasis.
Yeah, but my, that's basically where I'm coming from, is that I just don't think a special exception approach. Then work i- is the right way to do this, but I, I am. You know, I do acknowledge the value of being able to. You know, that there are buildings that uh are in deteriorating condition, they're not financially viable, and that we need to find an approach. Uh, to rehabilitate.
Special exception is the only way, it's the only way you should do it. So that you have specific criterias you pointed out that are restrictive, more restrictive than. For instance, the B two allows a one and two family dwelling. So they, it is more restricted than that. And and I think that that's, I think it needs to be special exception, I don't, I would never propose this, it's just a a side plan use.
I agree.
I I have another, another point.
Go ahead.
Another point that I have an issue with as this is proposed, is that it gives the, the commission discretion to evaluate how this affects. Their, their, their opinion of the commercial zone. I can't remember exactly where it is in here, but we can use that in our judgment. That again is too open handed, that that shouldn't, you know, zoning should be. Little bit more straight in line than that proposal, I gotta find my copy of it, I could read it. Uh. But it gives you the, it gives the discretion, and it's just, it's too open.
What I would like to do then, while you look that up and see if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak. So at this time, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this amendment? During, none, okay? Chairman, cuz you were like, I read all those pages, I read that, I read it twice. The only thing I didn't like was that Percy could come in and if there's a house. You like old houses, your house is beautiful.